Everybody, I can hear everybody.
Are we ready to start? Is everyone here?
I believe, uh, one.
Jenny?
Four, five, six, seven. Eight. Who am I missing? Catherine's, I see Catherine on.
Rosemary, keep trying, let me know. I have Rosemary on the phone.
Okay.
Uh, let's see.
Eight, nine, oh, there's Mrs. Cheswick, nine. I got nine, I got nine. Nine.
Sorry, I call the order. Meeting for Wednesday, November twelfth, Vendor Relations Committee in Special Meeting for General Purposes, including your proposal of the two thousand twenty-six budget in train, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the public for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
Mr. Borthwick?
Here.
Mr. Casey? Mrs. Cheswick?
Present.
Ms. Fox?
Present.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Ms. Merkel?
Present.
Ms. Trizlecki?
Present.
Mr. Triano? Mr. Holmes?
Present.
Nine present.
Before we begin the meeting, I will turn it over to Rosemary Boland, who will be speaking about.
You can.
Former Scranton City Mayor and Vietnam Veteran, Mr. Dave Wenzel. Rosemary?
Hi, Anjun.
I'm, I'm trying to get her connected here, let's see. Uh, let's see. Okay.
There's an iPhone now, if that's her.
Is that you, Rosemary?
Yes.
Can everybody else mute their phones while she's speaking, please, so we don't have any?
Okay, I don't, I don't hear you there, I don't think that's you, let me see.
Yes, there is, I'm on.
Okay.
I can see you.
Can, okay, can you, can everybody hear Rosemary?
Yes.
Okay, I'll hang up the phone now, Rosemary.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, bye. Okay, you're up, Ms. Boland.
Good evening, or good evening, I guess we should say, um. I thank you, President Holmes, for allowing me this time, and especially Danielle Cheswick and the rest of the board for taking this opportunity to let me speak about a dear friend of mine, and probably about a friend of many of you. Uh, Dave Wenzel, as you all know, was mayor of the city of Scranton, and he was uh, honored last week by the University of Scranton, uh, for his distinguished service, a life of service. And I was at that event, and during that event, there was a phone call to Carol Wenzel, Dave's sister-in-law. And it was the Geno Merly Center telling Carol uh, that her brother-in-law had passed, which was so terribly ironic that that would happen that night. So I walked over, I interrupted, and I asked Janet Wenzel to walk with me towards the door to get away from a lot of people, and Janet took the phone, and Janet Wenzel, the mayor's wife, um, was given the notice that Dave had passed. Uh, I never had that happen to me, I guess, in my whole life, where I was at an event to honor someone and that same person passed away. It was so terribly ironic. I wanted to just say a few things about David that maybe some people in our city don't know, you know, they, people say a lot, what is the measure of a man? Or what is the measure of a person? Does it matter? Uh, what gender? But in this case, what's the measure of a man? I knew Dave Wenzel for quite a number of years. I know Janet Wenzel, who many of you probably know, was a teacher in the Scranton School District. When Dave was wounded so severely, it was at Prescott School, she was notified by the military when they came to the school to tell her how terribly wounded David was. Her sister, her sister Carol Wenzel, she taught with me at Woodyer, and she taught at Audubon School and over at John Adams. Uh, and Janet herself taught in a multiple of our buildings. Uh, two of my closest friends on this earth. So, uh, one morning during the summer, many, many years ago, Janet Wenzel phoned me to say, Rosemary, David's going to call you and ask you to go to the movies. I want you to tell him yes. So I said to her, what are you talking about? She said, no, I have to hang up, he's calling you right now. So he did, and I said, okay, yes, I'll go to the movies, and in one summer, we saw ten of the worst movies ever made in this country, and it was also carried in the Scranton Times, the ten worst movies. And that is the kind of, uh, fun I had with him as a wounded soldier, but more importantly, as my friend. I read in the newspaper one morning, in the letters to the editor, that he should be pro-life. I was taken aback by that because I never met any person who was more pro-life than David Wenzel. I would like everybody in this town to know what it's like to wake up every single morning and have to strap on two legs, two prosthetic legs, and a prosthetic arm, and carry on as if there was nothing difficult about that task. I witnessed that task many, many times. And I'm sorry to say that I don't know many people in our community who realize what's right in front of their eyes. Maybe we see things that we, we just don't see, or we're so used to seeing them that we don't pay much attention to what we're looking at. And in David's case, he was such a unique individual. You all, I know you've all read about him, and probably some of you knew him a little bit. But this was a man who I consider, and I very rarely use this term, he is a hero, in my opinion. And what a tremendous example for the children in the Scranton School District or anywhere else. He was a model of what it means to have such great dignity and respect. He was a caring human being. He was absolutely pro-education, as obviously with the, his uh, wife and sister-in-law. And also, David has, uh, niece and a nephew, and I had the privilege of teaching them at Woodyer. And it was unbelievable how wonderful he was with those two children. David loved kids. He came, excuse me, he came to Woodyer. Uh, we had to figure out how to get him into the school. Then we had to figure out how I would be able to get my class to that location so he could talk to them. He, he talked to them about Vietnam, he talked to them about what it's like to be a soldier. He showed them his medals and explained to them what it is to get those medals. And he talked to them about what they wanted to do, he talked to them and encouraged them so much to do the best they could do at school. Uh, he was a shining example for students in this district. To, for him, when he came back, as many of you do know, I think, he went to the University of Scranton, and that's where he was in Rotsie, and after he left Vietnam so severely wounded, he actually, um, came home from Valley Forge, and he decided he would go back to school for his MBA, and he did do that. And he met many friends at the university, many, many people so respected him for his, uh, I don't know, tenaciousness, I suppose, to, to do what he was doing. And I would love to have everybody understand what, what we had in the city of Scranton for all these years, he's, he passed away at age eighty. And what a wonderful, wonderful time he showed in this town what it means to really be a true human being. You, don't pass out when I tell you now that David was a Republican. And yes, I did work for him to get elected to office because I felt when you see a person like David, and he represents the real American ideal of democracy, I had no, no choice but to work for him, and he was elected mayor. So I just hope, it's my fervent hope, that everyone in our city realizes, down at the Geno Merly Center, or anywhere else in a veterans' hospital, or anywhere on the street, we meet a veteran, whether they're doing well, or where they're in bad shape and need help. It's our responsibility to take care of our veterans. Absolutely, positively, it is our American responsibility to take care of our veterans. They took care of democracy for us, we have to pay them back. And I'm getting the feeling in this country lately that that's not happening. That people like this are being ignored, they're not being taken care of, and that is a promise we have made to every veteran since I read a book. All we have to do is realize what we owe to these men and women in our services. And it is high time, we better get back to teaching about this in our schools. I did call Dr. Keating, and she knows I'm bugging her about this. Starting on November sixteenth, on PBS, there will be a series, Six Nights, Ken Burns, The American Revolutionary War. I encourage everybody to watch it and to remember the ideals that we live by in this country. We are the greatest nation on this earth. And we're forgetting that, we're absolutely losing sight of it. And David was the perfect example of what it meant to be a true American, and in my book, a true American hero. So I'm asking everyone to say a prayer for their family, David's family, his wife and sister-in-law especially, because Janet Wenzel, uh, the wife of a veteran like this deserves a medal herself. And so, uh, with that, I'm not going to keep this school board, but I would love it if you would all please encourage all of our faculty to remember what Veterans Day is all about. I know at the university, when I taught there, I put what even know, they, none of them knew what eleven eleven meant, they had no idea. And so they were, they were giving me all kinds of answers, except the correct answer. So, um, I'm going to close with that. I want everybody to celebrate, we have to start doing our patriotic songs again. We have to celebrate Flag Day on the fourteenth of June. And most notably, we should absolutely be celebrating November the eleventh. Because from World War One forward, we have lost so many giants, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Rosemary. Before we move on, I ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence, not only in honor of Mayor Dave Wenzel, but in all veterans.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you again. God bless Mayor Wenzel's family, and again, to all veterans, thank you. We will now turn over the meeting to the Vendor Relations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. And on behalf of the whole board and, um, the district, we know that you are a veteran, a proud veteran. Uh, we'd like to thank you and your family for the service that you gave us to help keep our democracy strong. Thank you. And, um, on behalf of the board, our condolences to the Wenzel family. And thanking them for their service. I learned when I worked at the Geno Merly, I worked at the Geno Merly for eighteen years. And I got to know a lot of the veterans. But when you're a veteran, it's not only you, but it's also their families that give service to the country. And I'd like to thank all the families of all veterans, especially the Wenzel family. And I will vendor relations. Um, the first one is the West Granton High School Gym Project.
So at this time, um, I do not have any drawings, um, or anything submitted to me to be able to present to the board. Um, there are still informational meetings taking place, uh, with vendors to gather information. Um, there is not a final submission of materials to be presented, the process is still underway at this time. Once there is a final product, it will be presented publicly, uh, for the board to be able to review. Also sent in your packet.
Erin, if you could, uh, contact, uh, whatever vendors are making, uh, designs and ask them to submit them ASAP. And so that when the new board comes on, um, they can at least have an idea.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this personally, Director Casey, now, I will reach out to both vendors tomorrow. Um, I will now own this, and I will ask them for a timeline of when drawings will be complete so that the proper vendor relations meeting can be set. And that you will have specifics on when we will have actual drawings for review. Because I, I very honestly, at this time, I don't have that information. So I would never want to stand up here and not be fully transparent with the board or the public. So I'm going to take this one on personally at this time.
Thank you, Erin. Under the next issue. Uh, the West Granton High School Continuity of Education Plan.
So, um, over the weekend, um, I was out of town, so it was a little crazy for me, I'd like to, to thank very much, uh, Mr. O'Donnell for stepping up and for filling my shoes very, very well when I was gone, um, and, and doing a very good job um, in, in my absence. Um, we had an issue with boiler number two at West Granton High School. Um, when that happened in the overnight of Thursday to Friday morning, we were unsure at that point what was going to happen. Mr. DeLuca immediately stepped up, met with multiple people, and had put what we call a continuity of education or continuing education plan in place. What would happen here is we, through the Department of Education, would have to have approval to alter how education is being delivered from the traditional brick and mortar, uh, process to other formats. Mr. DeLuca, if I'm explaining this wrong, please jump in to me at any given time, but essentially, what we would need to do is take any type of full-time special education class, and it would need to continue to operate in another location, another school, essentially. Um, so that those children were still receiving the full-time, um, education they need to meet their exceptionality. At the same time, we would be transitioning our, our, what we would call our regular education students onto a synchronous virtual environment. We would have, um, places located where if we needed support or help built in, um, or anyone who had special needs, in addition, we must be able to serve breakfast and lunch every day. Um, we would need alternative plans for our CTC students. Essentially, we would need to still be able to operate school, but we wouldn't be able to access a building. Because of what happened, we started this process with West Granton High School, I'll let Mr. DeLuca speak in a second. Um, but after this, we are actually going to start building these out for all schools. Because, listen, I have an old home, and I had things happen, steam pipes burst and other things happen, and water pipes go, and it, it, it's not a good situation for a couple days, and in any of our buildings, new or old, or this could happen. So having these continuity of education plans approved, and having a plan ready to go is just an element of preparedness that will put the district in a better place. Mr. DeLuca, is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, Dr. Keating, you're on point.
Dr. Keating, if I could just add one comment related to the, the meal service. When you're serving in a virtual environment, you do require a waiver from the Bureau of Food and Nutrition. Um, I've been in contact with them, they say that they can grant us a ten-day waiver, but anything beyond ten days would require USDA approval. So in the event that, uh, an event like this does happen, and we need to pull this trigger, we will be applying for those, uh, for those waivers.
Okay, anything else on this subject? If not, uh, we'll go to the flexible spending accounts.
I'm gonna turn this one over to Mr. Laffey, are you okay with this one, to talk about?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Um, in your, in your weekly packet, um, there was some brief information on some data we collected related to flexible spendings accounts. Obviously, a flexible spending account is a, is a pre-tax deduction that employees can contribute to, to help cover some their, um, you know, medical costs, whether it be your deductible, your prescription copays, your contacts. Uh, the list goes on and on and on, as well as there's some options for, for dependent care. The advantages of this for the employee is that obviously lowers their taxable income. Um, so saving them approximately twenty-five to thirty percent on, on their, on the deduction. Um, as an employer, it also lowers our, uh, share of the social security and, and Medicare taxes. Um, I was contacted by someone locally, a firm called DeHae McCandrew, who offers a service like this and provides, provides services for, um, districts in the area as part of the NEIU nineteen, I'd say possibly five or six, I don't have the list in front of me. Um, they, they offer a, uh, Scranton-based location with access to, uh, reimbursements, you know, relatively easy or quickly. They have a debit card program, uh, excuse me, a debit card program where, um, you know, all employees enrolled will have access to utilize that as well. They do charge a fee. Um, I believe there's an administrative fee for, um, let me see if I can find it here, I wasn't quite ready for this. Um, approximately, based off of twelve hundred and fifty employees, um, we're looking at probably a fee structure that would cost us about seventeen thousand one hundred dollars a year. Um, again, if employees do enroll in this and contribute pre-tax dollars to their FSA account, it will lower the, the district's social security and Medicare expenses as well. We would need approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in employee contributions to actually offset that seventeen thousand dollar fee. A second firm that has been, that we've been contacted with is more of a nationwide, um, or Pennsylvania firm. They do have Scranton dedicated account managers, and they're called American Fidelity. Um, they currently work with the IU eighteen, the IU nineteen, um, Lackawanna Trail, and some other, um, districts up in here in the Northeast, like Tuanda, Northern, Southern Tegu County, Willsboro, Jersey Shore, uh, Sear, et cetera. Um, they, um, there would be no cost for them to, to provide this service. Um, how, and I asked them straight up the question, the straight question, like, well, how do you guys, you know, basically cover your costs of running this program? Well, they, they would, the agreement would allow them to offer voluntary benefits, voluntary, um, insurance benefits, uh, to, to our employees as an offset to that be that, um, that, um, the local firm would, would, would charge. Um, I will note that our current healthcare consultant, BSI, most likely would, could provide service like this as well. In a previous presentation that they provided to us, they say that there's a cost of approximately three to four dollars per enrolled employee for it. So, um, we presented that information in a summary form to the board this past weekend, and, um, in anticipation of this meeting for, uh, for the vendor relations. Happy to answer any questions.
So Pat, um, in this situation, are we, basically, as the vendor relations committee, going to discuss this and recommend something for the motion for the full board to vote on?
I'm, I'm, I think that's typically how it works, Tom, um, you know, most motions being written say is the recommendation of the committee and the superintendent to, to move forward. So we, we put it on here for discussion.
So, um, the, the, what was the name of the, the local firm again?
Um, DeHae McCandrew.
DeHae McCandrew. So I, I dealt with them at Riverside when I was a teacher there. Um, they're very professional, they're local, I think their, their office is on Main Avenue. Um, they were always very accessible. If, and honestly, if you didn't even utilize all of, um, the funds, they, they were willing to, you know, give, give checks, like, they're, they're really great to work with, and talking from professional experience as a teacher at Riverside, um, you know. So I, I would love to support local, we, I, I know this board has spoken quite a bit about, you know, making sure to support, uh, Scranton businesses and people that invest in Scranton. So I, I don't know if we have to do like a, a vote as a committee or what. Uh, but I would definitely move to, to support, um, moving them forward for, for board consideration. Um, I don't want my other vendor relations meeting, uh, committee members.
The agenda for tonight, correct?
Yeah, the committee's gonna make a recommendation.
So we could vote on it tonight?
Mm-hmm. Just gonna make a recommendation to bring to the meeting.
What do I need to do, Sean?
Make, the committee needs to make a recommendation to bring to the meeting right after this.
Anybody who's on the committee have a problem with this? If not, we'll move it to, uh, have the motion to approve tonight.
I just want to point out, it's Danny McCandrew, I'm not related to the McCandrews, I don't want that, so, or affiliated with this, so.
Sure.
I put that out there.
I'm fine as we move it to the, the next agenda.
Pardon me?
I'm fine with the plan.
So we'll vote on this tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. And the next item is the construction manager contract. Is Mr. Moran with us?
Attorney, uh, oh, sorry, there, Attorney Fitzgerald is with us.
Thank you, Dr. Keating. So I know that Attorney Moran is still negotiating, uh, the construction management contract, uh, it's my understanding that it was, uh, quite expansive, um, and it's my understanding, the negotiations are still in, in progress on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next one is the photocopies. Um.
Again, Attorney Fitzgerald will be updating us.
Yes, uh, so the will of the board, uh, is for the district to negotiate directly with vendors uh, for services and to no longer follow or adhere to, you know, our previous RFP policy. Uh, since this change occurred during the pendency of the current copier and print services RFP, uh, it's the solicitor's office and our recommendation here, uh, that we first end that RFP by rejecting all of the proposals uh, before attempting to negotiate with any vendor, uh, especially, uh, since some of the proposers have already attempted to either modify or reduce uh, their pricing after the proposals were opened. Uh, so that's our, our recommendation here is to, uh, close the RFP by, uh, rejecting the proposals so that the districts and us can, we can, uh, yeah, negotiate more freely with, you know, proposers.
That's on the agenda tonight to be voted on to, uh.
Correct.
Is there anybody on the committee who has a problem rejecting the bids? If not.
Are there any questions to Attorney Fitzgerald?
Uh, sure, I, I guess, I wasn't here last meeting, and I'm kind of, I don't understand who answers the question of that initiative in the recovery plan about, um, the RFP process. Um, I, I did listen, and I know that Dr. Sailor said PDE would tell you to defer to your attorney. Um, I, I don't know if my questions were kind of confused, because I was just asking what our obligations are to the initiatives in the recovery plan at this time. Um, I, I was looking, and I saw a letter that we received from Dr. Sailor last January, like in twenty twenty-four. And that was regarding like the tax increase, but it said that we, during monitoring, still had to follow all the initiatives of the plan. So I was just looking for clarification if that's not the case anymore.
Anybody else would like to speak on this subject?
I, I guess we discussed from, in the.
Wait, I'm confused, I asked a question.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm gonna, uh, I'm speaking about your question, I I think what you're asking is, are we, in the monitoring phase plan, is there still a line that says we have to put things out for RFP? My understanding was, I don't think it is. So can we have that clarification from either the attorney or, um, uh?
Shall we have Dr. Sailor repeat what she said at the last?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Dr. Sailor?
Um, excuse me, if I could just clarify my question, um, because I, I, I was just speaking, and uh, my question was, I did hear what Dr. Sailor said last time, and I did send her other questions too. So, um, her, her advice was to ask your attorney, I don't know what exactly that was for, so my question isn't directed to any board members, it's directed towards either Dr. Sailor or the attorney that's present at this time. Um, we did receive a letter in January of twenty twenty-four while we were in monitoring, that said, while we're in monitoring, that we must abide by the initiatives in the recovery plan. So my question is just, there's initiative in the recovery plan that we should, um, as Dr. Sailor stated at the last meeting, uh, con- continue through the RFP processes over and over. Um, so the question is just to Dr. Sailor or the attorney, if we still need to abide by that.
It's a little lower because you're coming across blurred, and nobody in this room can understand you. I'm not trying to shut you down, I'm trying to get your opinion so we could understand.
I understand, thank you. I understand, thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, just to clarify, if Dr. Sailor or the attorney present, yes, thank you, could clarify if while in monitoring, I'm okay with whatever the answer is, I just need a clear answer, um, because, uh, the the statutes and such makes it seem as though while we're in monitoring, that we need to abide by the initiatives in the plan still. And that is backed by the document that we received about the tax increase in January of twenty twenty-four. So I'm just looking to to know if something has changed while in the monitoring phase and that we no longer have to abide by the initiatives in the recovery plan.
Dr. Sailor, can you repeat what you stated at the previous meeting that Director Fox was absent from?
Yes, and as as I said at that meeting, PDE does not give legal advice, and I believe Attorney Moran at that meeting said he felt that the board had followed that by requesting proposals, and the fact that they had rejected all of them did not change that. But I'll let Attorney Fitzpatrick, Fitzgerald, I'm sorry.
All right, Dr. Sailor, that's that's accurate. By engaging in the RFP process here and rejecting them, we are continuing to abide by that that plan.
That was my understanding.
And and that is what what's occurring now.
Thank you.
Okay, if no one else has anything else, we'll now move to. Ty, are we gonna go, or do you want me to take the rest of the meeting over?
No, that comes back to the president. Number seven, updates in enrollment.
I did send a memo to the board. I just want everyone to know, in July, when we had a vendor relations committee meeting, at that meeting, we talked about enrollment, because at that time, we were unsure where would enrollment would be. Enrollment has been pretty consistently oscillating between ninety-three fifty and ninety-three seventy on weekly enrollment reports. Today's report, we saw a little bit of a dip, it was ninety-three forty-three, and we watched these ebbs and flow in enrollment happen on a pretty regular basis. Up by ten, down by ten, back up again, but somewhere around ninety-three fifty seems to be, as of the October first PIMS poll, where we are holding. We had ended the year almost in a similar place, and we are holding steady with that number. It is really important to also let you know that in looking at enrollment for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, we have a projected early intervention enrollment of between one hundred and sixty and one hundred and eighty students. This is up from the one hundred and forty students this year, which means that we will have to be considering the possibility, and it's in tonight's budget presentation, of eight to ten additional full-time special education classes moving into the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So I did say that I would give an update. I know that there's been two board memos put in the packet with enrollment figures, but that seems to be where we're holding right now. Mr. O'Donnell has some information on the pre-K numbers as well. Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes, pre-K, we have three classrooms. Last is at capacity, Sumner is at capacity, and Adams only has two spots left, so they will probably be filled within the next couple of weeks as more parents are registering their their children, or, excuse me, preschool.
I I don't mean to jump ahead, but with the with the situation with the budget being passed, is there an effect on our ability to either internally or in conjunction with Head Start, potentially look at expanding the amount of class offerings we have next year?
So the request was actually made, Director Boerthwick, to look at expanding during the course of this year, similar to how we opened up a class at Charles Sumner in the middle of last year. Initially, when we were looking at that, we were looking at where the enrollment number sat at the beginning of the school year. Without a state budget, I don't know, or could I comment with any kind of authority if that possibility still exists or how it will exist? There were pre-K counts and pre-K numbers that were released today with the budget information that was there. I will absolutely do follow-ups with our local, our our local partner in these classes, as well as with the Department of Education, and I will make sure that that information is updated in a board memo, either by this Friday or over the course of the weekend to be uploaded for the following week.
Thank you very much.
Pat, budget updates?
Yes, good afternoon, everyone, or good evening, excuse me. I'm gonna go through the brief presentation of what we will be requesting the board to vote on this evening. Just give me one moment, I will share my screen. Okay, great. So as you know, we're we're entering the second step of the of the budget process. The first step was the adoption of the preliminary budget over over the summer. This is the second step, which is adoption of a proposed final, and then the last step thirty days from now is the earliest that we can do it, is the adoption of a of a final twenty twenty-six budget. So this evening, we are, we are looking at, we are presenting to you a budget of two hundred and forty-one point four million dollars of revenue and two hundred and forty-one point four million dollars of expenditures inclusive of a five million dollar budgetary reserve. Okay, so that's actually two hundred and thirty-six million dollars of of actual expenses. All right? In this budget, we have incorporated some of the positive news today that we heard about the state budget. While I've not seen anything officially related to numbers for the Scranton School District, I have seen certain data that would indicate that Scranton School District would be a a district that would receive some significant increase in some of our state funding. So so I just wanted to note that 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 has been included in this in this proposal. You'll you'll note that, similar to July, we've, we're estimating a starting fund balance of about thirty-two point four million. I want to say that prior to final adoption, I will be updating the twenty twenty-five budget to a projected actual, but I've been unable to do that at this time with the lack of state subsidy. I'd be purely a guess as as to what we'd be getting. So now that we have some firm fixed numbers, we believe I'll be able to kind of give us a a projected actual for for twenty twenty-five as we move into the final budget. So that thirty-two point four million will certainly change. But looking at the thirty-two point four, it currently consists of twenty-seven point four of an unassigned and a five million dollar committed amount for specifically for capital improvements. That puts our percentage of unassigned at about eleven point three six and percent of our estimated expenditures, and as we move into the final budget, it most likely will be the recommendation of the administration to commit funds for either future capital improvements, potentially challenges to the recent reassessment that we'll be implementing, which we will be discussing, you know, just a just a moment, but we will be bringing that forward for you. Again, it it does comply with the recovery plan, specifically initiatives R O one and add and admin O five, okay? Just jumping into this, you'll see that the state subsidy, just from a revenue standpoint, it is our largest source, it's sixty-four percent. You've heard Dr. Keating and I say that through this budget impasse, how much we rely on state subsidy, with over sixty-four percent of it coming from the state sources. Local sources represent about thirty-two percent, and the federal and other financing sources represent about four percent. On the expenditure side, no surprise here, instruction is our largest expense at sixty-four percent, followed by our support services, twenty-five percent, debt service being eight percent, and our non-instructional supports, which is your three thousand, such as your student activities, your student athletics, et cetera, at at three percent. So you'll see just a little bit here of just what we've done, what what we've been able to accomplish with the district in terms of our fund balance growth. We went from essentially, prior to twenty twenty, having a negative fund balance, to again, upwards of thirty-two million dollars that we're projecting for 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 twenty twenty-six. Just a quick snapshot of of a five-year actual unaudited and and budgeted trends by high high-level function here. And then we'll jump into local revenue. So at at the local, let me zoom in for this, so it's a little easier to see. So at the local revenue side, obviously, we know that there has been a countywide reassessment, okay? And that countywide reassessment has to be converted based on a revenue-neutral calc- calculation. So what we've done is, we received the the non-certified assessed values from the assessor's office, it was approximately six point two billion dollars. The recent news of the possible, the potential sale of a hospital, most likely to a nonprofit, there's an additional, that's potentially one hundred and eighty-seven million dollars of new assessed value that will, that could become non-taxable. So we've set our millage at just over six billion, I'm sorry, our assessed value at just over six billion. To come with a revenue-neutral levy, you'll see here in this section here at the bottom of the table, of fifty-three million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. We'd be converting our millage from one forty-seven point eight four nine to eight point nine one four nine five. Okay, so that is a preliminary number. Now, let me say that this will change. We anticipate these numbers, the the reassessment being certified on on November fifteenth, but based off of the data that we have now, this is the estimated millage for this period of time. As that assessed value changes through certification, we will modify that millage to still come in at a revenue-neutral levy of fifty-three point six million, okay? On a positive note, you'll notice in the next column over, which is the state property tax reduction allocation, we saw an increase of that for about by about six hundred thousand dollars. So there's now an additional six hundred thousand dollars that will be given out as as an reduction on people's tax bill for eligible properties, okay? So that's, so that's great news. Where we get very tricky on this is, right now, the exclusion amount that people receive on their tax bills for homestead property tax reduction cannot be in excess of fifty percent of the median assessed value of a homestead property. We don't have those final numbers just yet, but based off of the prior year numbers and an estimated calculation of what those newly assessed values may be, we're cutting it very, very close. If for some reason, the exclusion amount exceeded the excess of fifty percent of the median assessed value, that balance, that excess, would have to be distributed to all properties in the city of Scranton. So we we may have to rework our millage calculation just slightly, slightly, but at the end of the day, it's going to be revenue-neutral to the school district. The state has taken on a larger share of property tax relief to tune to seven point seven million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand. Okay, so that's, so that's positive news. Here's our Act One index limits. There is no tax increase proposed in this, in this proposal, so that's positive news. Obviously, the timing of this is 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 very positive with the state news this this afternoon about the budget coming out, okay? So so we are not proposing, in light of the state news that just came out today and the estimated state funding that we will receive, we're not proposing a tax increase, but we would be able to raise millage by six point one percent according to that, to the Act One. All other, all other local taxes will remain at the at at their current levels. Just jumping into the state revenue, again, we did incorporate some figures that we've heard or seen circulated related to the Scranton School District. You know, the the proposal today did include, down here in the yellow, one hundred and five million dollars into BEF, which we estimate to be a, shouldn't have done that, we estimate to be an increase of about one point four million, one million, three ninety-two for BEF. We're assuming, again, we have to assume two budget cycles for twenty-six, twenty-seven, that a similar amount of funding is put through the BEF formula, which is another one hundred and five million, or another increase of about one point three million. I'm going to show you in the next slide how we calculate this. For special education funding, they approved thirty-seven point four million new money, which would equate to about four hundred and sixty-nine thousand of of new money for the Scranton School District in twenty-five, twenty-six, and assuming a similar investment in twenty-six, twenty-seven, approximately four hundred thousand, that number decreases just based on our share of the ADMs, okay? So as you'll see here, when we're calculating our basic education state subsidies, we need to take into consideration two two items, we need to take into consideration a twenty-five, twenty-six budget, broken up into two installments, forty-five percent and fifty-five percent, and a twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, which we haven't even seen yet, again, broken up between forty-five and fifty-five percent, coming down to what we're proposing for BES and special education, excuse me, of seventy-six million, just over seventy-six million BEF in the calendar year, and just shy of eleven million of special education in the calendar year. Ready to learn block grant? Again, in in the proposal, there is an additional nine point two million of ready-to-learn block grant, eight point four million related to the adequacy funding, and approximately eight hundred thousand in tax equity supplement. So adding that on top of the seventeen million we already previously had, we're budgeting twenty-six point two million for the total three buckets of the ready-to-learn block grant, which is your foundation, your adequacy, and and your tax supplement. Unlike BEF and special education, where we assume to have future investment in the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, for this purpose, we've said that we're we're going to hold that flat, that there wouldn't be new additional funds, it would just be re- recurring, okay? So those are your large, your three largest outsider reimbursement for PISs, your state revenues. Here is your, why that box is around that, sorry, pardon, but our federal revenues, we are assuming a twenty percent reduction in our Title I from our twenty-five, twenty-six allocation for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and the complete elimination of Titles Two, Three, and Four for twenty-six, twenty-seven. In total, we anticipate that to hit the twenty-six budget cycle with the impact of about one point three seven five million dollars. When that becomes fully implemented, meaning we don't have one year of funding, it's going to be over two point seven million dollars of a reduction and potentially over a reduction in in federal funds. What is not included in this budget is any reductions of expenses that were previously funded with title dollars. There, it's assumed for this presentation to that to that lost revenue to be picked up with other sources in either the local or the state level. Most likely, the the additional ready-to-learn block grant for adequacy will be able to, under some allowable use, pick up some of those costs. But again, that will be some for future discussion that that we will have to have, okay? Just jumping down to, I apologize, I don't know why these little text boxes are are on here, but we've, sorry, it's hard to present. Again, this is just a breakout of all of our different revenues from local, state, and federal, totaling for a five-year period, totaling two hundred and forty-one million, four hundred and two thousand, four and two thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars. Jumping down into our our expenditures, you'll you'll notice that we have, again, this is broken up by object. We we saw approximately about a ten million dollar increase related to salary and benefits. We look at purchase services as a whole, three hundreds, four hundreds, five hundreds, that's about a a five million dollar increase. Our six hundreds and seven hundreds actually were reduced by approximately seven hundred thousand dollars, and our other financing sources and uses, which is primarily our debt service, and again, our budgetary reserve, kind of held flat. So what attributes the the ten point seven million dollars increase in wages and and benefits? Well, obviously, we have all of our contractual CBAs, which run through twenty twenty-eight. So incorporated in this is all the contractual salary increases, okay? We've also, as you know, restored certain things like the middle school schedule, we expanded pre-K. What's also in here, and I do not have listed, is the transition from contracted services to salary for our school safety officers. Our SSOs were previously a professional service that we contracted for out of our purchase services. Now that they're our staff, this that aid that impacted or increased on the wage and benefit side. Additionally, there's a twenty-seven pay in this calendar year, while it only affects a small amount of 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 district employees, that did add to the cost for the calendar year this year, and we've also increased our healthcare by about one point five million dollars based off of where our where our claims are. We've also added many positions, as Dr. Keating noted, related to some of our enrollment. Inclusive in this is sixteen positions related to autistic support, both professional and paraprofessional, excuse me, seventeen positions, and then and then a supervisor, elementary STEM teachers, there there's eight positions, and then many positions that have remained vacant in twenty twenty-five. While we kind of dealt with the budget impasse of the state, we said to you last year, these were positions that we desired to have, but we weren't going to fill them until we knew that the subsidy was was going to be coming. So these have been sitting vacant now for almost eleven months. But, you know, these are all the new positions, included librarians, library clerks, some IT staff that had been vacant, a grant writer, that's been that we previously shared with the city of Scranton, has has been vacant, and just recently, I know Dr. Keating informed the board that we were fortunate enough to receive a resorted practices grant, there will be a floating assistant principal that is grant-funded with those funds. Purchase services, again, as I noted, those are three, four, and five hundreds. That is an increase from year to year of about five point one million. The primary driver is specialty contracted services. Again, we heard, we've talked about the increased enrollment for autistic support, in addition to the staff that we. in addition to the staff that we have in terms of the professional and paraprofessional, there are all the ancillary services that they require. And many times we need to, we need to contract with these because we're unable to staff them. Um, additionally, special ed outside uh tuition placements, as well as our charter cyber tuition of about three point, that that accounts for about three point nine million dollars of our uh growth in in this area, as well as student transportation. There's some contractual increases in student transportation, but we're also adding more vehicles. Um, our transportation contractors have been great working with us as we've struggled with new um special ed transportation needs, as well as some homeless and foster needs that have that that have driven. So we've we've assumed to add some vehicles uh for twenty twenty six calendar year. However, I do know Ms. Maloney and some members of our special ed department are trying to work together to mitigate that increase as much as possible. Just jumping down into our six hundreds and seven hundreds, which are your books and your periodicals and your equipment. As I noted, this is actually down by about seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. You know, that's um, that's good news. That's that's fantastic news. Um. The biggest reduction in this is really with our in our in our IT budget. Mr. Suma did a great job of analyzing, you know, what we've been allocating his department, and he was able to reduce his line item budget by six hundred and fifty thousand. That has a lot to do with how we strategically utilize our S R dollars. Um, at the end of the S R period, we invested in things like Chromebook carts, and we also changed how we handled our Chromebooks at the K to eight le- level by having them remain in the buildings. It's mitigated the losses that we've experienced with some of these devices. Um, we've also instituted a repair program, in-house repair program that has, you know, helped us kind of sustain a warehouse of replaceable devices in the event that that it's necessary. So out of your um twenty eight, forty one, which is your IT department seven hundred lineup, there is a reduction of over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's directly attributed uh to that number. Okay? Debt service um minus increase, it's about nineteen and a half million of about three hundred and sixty seven thousand. As you know, we issued uh thirty million dollars of additional debt at the end of twenty twenty four and early twenty twenty five for capital improvements that attributed to that, that would actually have been higher. However, tomorrow, we will be closing on the refunding of the twenty twenty seventeen Cs and Ds with the twenty twenty five As that will realize us net present value savings of over four hundred thousand dollars over the life of over the life of the bond. So um that uh that increase was actually offset slightly in year one and will continue to be lower had we not refunded the bonds twenty seventeen Cs and Ds. Um, so again, lastly, just making it up, so the the it the budget does contain a budgetary reserve of over five million dollars. Again, that's that's a positive. That means our revenues are have exceeded our expenses by five million dollars. Now, when I presented to you back in July, this number was higher. This number was was seven point three. So a lot of things have changed since then, you know, but some of the things I want to highlight as to kind of why this went down slightly. Again, it went down two million dollars, and you think about a two hundred million dollar budget, it's only one percent. But um six hundred, there was an increase of in healthcare, as I noted, of over a hun- of over a million dollars. We also decreased our title one by an additional ten percent in the preliminary budget. We'd only decreased it by ten percent. Now we're decreasing it by twenty percent after kind of some of the news we've been hearing. We don't know exactly what what it's going to end up, but we'd rather be on the conservative side of things. So there so there's an additional six hundred thousand. And as I mentioned, you know, the there's a the twenty seven pay, I'll call it an anomaly. It only occurs, I think, once every seven or eleven years. I should have caught that back in July. I didn't realize it until recently. So that's going to add about four hundred thousand dollars of of salary cost, um, salary and benefit cost uh in the twenty twenty six period. That totals about two million of the two point three. So um just going on through, you can at at your leisure, look at every single function and object for the last five years, actual unaudited and budget and proposed final budget. Um, again, in 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 the end, it totals again, two hundred and forty one million dollars, four hundred and two thousand, inclusive of that five million dollar uh budgetary reserve. Be happy to answer any questions.
In layman's terms, for the people who don't understand a lot of this, you're asking us to vote on this preliminary budget tonight?
Yeah, so Director Casey, we will be asking you to vote on this. Oh, sorry.
Are we or are we not the people of the city of Scranton going to need tax increase with this budget that we won't have tonight?
There is no tax increase with this budget. There is a change in the millage, but that is to re to balance it out with the new reassessed values. So we will, we will be calculating the millage at a revenue neutral rate. So there's no tax increase.
But we all understand what you're talking about. But the lady up in um North Scranton or Green Ridge or whatever, these figures are, what they want to know is one thing. Their tax bill is not going to him uh reflect a tax increase.
I will say the millage set by the Scranton School District will not include a tax increase. Whether their assessment changed in a up or down compared to the reassessment, that's a whole different story, Director Casey. I want to be very careful.
That's the county commissioners problem, the reassessment, not our.
Our rate will be set to where we are revenue neutral, which does not increase the tax revenue generated by the Scranton School District.
And we hope we have no uh control over the reassessment.
Correct, yes.
You answered all my questions.
I I have a question. Um, the city of Scranton is, so right now, property taxes are divvied up between land and improvement, and the city of Scranton is going to combine them into one valuation. Is that something we have, like, do?
Ours is already one that valuation. We don't have a separate land and improvement there. We don't have to worry about that. Ours has always been one value. And I I just want to, I should have said this at at the beginning, the action that I'm requesting you take tonight is to approve this this budget, with the understanding that anything you do tonight that is not concrete, it can be amended, it can be changed. In fact, the administration will continue to refine this um as as more information becomes available. Okay? So it's this merely sets the thirty day clock so that come the middle of December, thirty days from now, we can adopt the final budget.
And Mr. Laffey will be available on the district website for anyone to review.
Correct, it'll be at the website, and I believe also across the street at the public library, we'll have a copy as well.
Thank you, Pat, you do an excellent job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
A lot of teamwork here. Yeah, thank you, guys. Thanks to the central admin team, again, everybody for working and getting all the information easily, readily available.
Anyone else? Uh, since we don't have any public comment, we're going to go ahead and move to the voting. Um, I was going to have each committee just read it, but we're just going to go down in line. So up first, budget and finance, you're ten one, ten two, please.
Okay, so uh we have a list of bill payments, five hundred seventy eight thousand, fifteen dollars and fifty one cents. Financial financial impact is three hundred fifty six thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars and twenty eight cents, respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question.
Pat, how is the bill five hundred seventy eight, but the financial impact is three fifty six?
Oh, boy, let me see. Hold on one second. My computer's, am I frozen? Because my computer looks frozen. It could be a typo, Director Borthing.
You are not frozen.
All right, well, my back screen is, hold on one second.
Yeah, there's there's two different numbers. I would think that the bill payment and financial impact should be the same thing.
Yeah, give me one moment. I apologize.
Yeah, you're good.
Uh, can we please make a uh a motion to amend that resolution to read five hundred seventy eight thousand, fifteen dollars and fifty one cents for financial impact? That is a typo.
I'll second that.
On the question. Roll call.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Tezak?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Ms. Merkel?
Yes.
Mistress Lucky?
Yes.
Mr. Triano?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Now, do we have to read your whole thing again and vote there, solicitor? Do we need to read that or accept it as the correction made and the motion passes?
You'll have to read it uh out loud. You have to read it again with the correct figures that you've accepted to amend.
Tom. So we'll have a list of bill payments. It'll be five hundred seventy eight thousand, fifteen dollars and fifty one cents. The financial impact will be five hundred seventy eight thousand, fifteen dollars and fifty one cents, respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Ms. Merkel?
Yes.
Mistress Lucky?
Yes.
Mr. Triano?
Yes.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Next up, um, so an exception bill list, uh, the bill payments for November seventh, twenty twenty five are two million, seven hundred twenty six thousand, three hundred eighty three dollars and eighty two cents. November tenth, twenty twenty five, two hundred ten thousand, six hundred eighty eight dollars and thirty six cents for a total of two uh million, nine hundred thirty seven thousand dollars, seventy, or excuse me, two hundred, two million, nine hundred thirty seven thousand, seventy two dollars and eighteen cents. Um, the financial impact, uh, bill payments, two million, seven hundred twenty six thousand, three hundred eighty three dollars and eighty two cents. Payrolls is three point, three million, three hundred forty seven thousand, eight hundred ninety nine dollars and fourteen cents. Um, respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Ms. Merkel?
Yes.
Mistress Lucky?
Yes.
Mr. Triano?
Yes.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Education, ten three.
Yes, um, sorry, sorry, here. We will have a motion to approve West Scranton High School continuity of operation plan if needed.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Ms. Merkel?
Yes.
Mistress Lucky? Mr. Triano?
Yes.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Ten four personnel?
We will have a motion to approve the personnel report as attached. All hires are contingent upon all background checks and clearances.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Ms. Merkel?
Yes.
Mistress Lucky?
Yes.
Mr. Triano? Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Ten five, budget and finance.
Pat, it's a little out of order when we sign this, I'm so sorry. Okay, so um approved, so I have a motion to approve the proposed version of the final budget as attached for the year twenty twenty six. The public school code of nineteen forty nine as amended requires the formation and approval of the proposed version of the final budget. The obligation of the approval is placed upon the school board based upon information and exchange between the administration and the school board and the board of school directors of the city of Scranton is hereby in position to carry out its legal obligation. Copies of the proposed version of the final budget as adopted will be made available for inspection on the district website and the Albright Memorial Library. The board secretary shall advertise this action hereby, taking in accordance with law, and be subjected to approval of all documentation by the district solicitor, respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question.
I just wanted to say that, sorry, Ty. Um, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Laffey for all this hard work with us and that I think it's great that for another year in a row, um, we don't have to look at a tax increase for the community. So I'm definitely in favor of this.
Yeah, and I want to follow up on on what Danielle said, you know, thanks to everybody um who who works so hard in central administration. And I also want to thank um our our congressional delegation. I know that we've done this multiple times, talking about particularly how Senator Flynn spends a lot of time fighting for us down in Harrisburg. Same with um Representative Kozarowski and Representative Donahue. The fact that we just today were able to see the budget pass averts a disaster. And and I know, Mr. Laffey, you've been spending a lot of time about how how would we have survived if this budget didn't pass? And as such, um, I I want to let the, you know, the the people of Scranton know, we we've worked really hard on our end. The administration's worked hard on their end, and um this is a disaster averted because, you know, a- as as you saw at the last meeting, we went from, I think, like a fifty seven million dollars in the general fund balance to potentially one million dollars as of December thirty first. So the fact that the state government came through and that Scranton was able to get this kind of money um really helps us because the burden shouldn't be falling on Scranton taxpayers the way that it has. And and this this helps us immensely. So I I want to thank everybody involved.
I'd like to say that uh uh, this is the third budget that Tom, myself, Marie participated in. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that uh, since we got on the board, we've had three years of no tax increase. And uh, I'd like to also thank the remaining members of the board because they're just as much as part of this. But with the new board that came on two years ago, I feel that we've been fiscally responsible. We've also restored educational programs that were cut. And um, uh, I'd like to thank the administration. It's a new administration that this board put in place. And I feel that uh Dr. Keating with her leadership and uh Mrs. or uh Mr. Laffey and Mr. O'Donnell, they're steering the ship in the right direction, and I'm sure that with their help and their guidance, uh, this uh uh, the district will remain um possible and will intend to grow. And I also want to thank especially President Holmes, who over the last two years presided over this district. He's leaving the board. I want to thank him for his leadership, his guidance. And um as President, uh, Mr. Holmes, you're you're more than just a president. You still steer the ship in the right direction. And I want to thank you for that, and I also want to personally thank you for your military service.
Thank you, team effort. Thank you, everyone.
Um, Pat, for the budget real quick, is there, I know you said you're still working on the budget. Tax rebate sixty five in older, other districts like Mid Valley do it. Now, we talked a little bit today about it. Is that something we can look into? Um, whether it's a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, if they, you know?
Uh, certainly, yeah. So we we've we've looked at this before, and and for those watching who may be interested in this program, there is a link on our business office page to any taxes, to all tax assistance uh programs throughout the state locally as as well. But as Director McAndrew said, um, you know, there is a program run by the Department of Revenue with the state that for uh seniors over the age of sixty five or people with disabilities, eighteen and older, who make less than forty six thousand dollars, there could be property tax or rent rebate programs. I don't know a whole heck of a lot about the program itself, but I was able to find a report that was issued in twenty twenty five related to the twenty twenty three disbursements made, and it appears in the city of Scranton, there were approximately forty six hundred um total participants in this program. Um, thirty two hundred being of uh of the elderly over sixty five, o- over the age of sixty five or and fourteen hundred, almost fifteen hundred um who were dis- disabled. So, you know, you're you're looking at around thirty two hundred for the elderly, fourteen hundred for the disabled. Director McAndrew, a an additional rebate of a hundred dollars for the elderly would equate to approximately three hundred and twenty thousand dollars based off of the data that we have available to to us now.
Is that something maybe we can look into the final budget to see if we could swing something similar or?
We will certainly, yeah, we will look into it, and we'll, I'll I'll also speak with Mid Valley, see how their experience has has been with it also.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yep.
Roll call.
Um, Ms. Merkel?
Yes.
Mistress Lucky?
Yes.
Mr. Triano?
Yes.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Casey? Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Operations 10-6.
Oh, sorry, it's me. I didn't have that thrown. What is it, 10-6 you said?
Correct.
10-6 is the RFP. So I'll read it though. Motion to reject all proposals received in response to the district RFP for copy or print services.
I'll second it.
On the question. Roll call.
Mr. Zlecki?
Yes.
Mr. Triano? Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
No.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Ms. Merkel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Eight affirmative, one negative. Motion passes.
12-7 Community Relations.
A motion to accept a donation from Scranton Health Club Crunch Fitness to Scranton High School.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mr. Triano? Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Casey? Mrs. Cheswick?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Ms. Merkel?
Yes.
Mr. Zlecki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
10-8.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve a tax revenue anticipation note in an amount not to exceed $32,800,000 with Fidelity Bank with an interest rate of 3.5%. The approval is based on the proposal submitted by Fidelity Bank and deposit for the Scranton School District 2026 TRAN. The TRAN will be managed on an as-needed drawdown basis. A summary of all proposals was previously provided to the Board of Education. The Board authorized the district administration and solicitor to prepare and finalize all necessary paperwork related to the 2026 TRAN transaction. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question.
So, Mr. Laffey, because we just got this, you know, breaking news today about the budget, can you explain what our obligations would be related to this? If potentially we didn't need it?
Correct. Yeah, that's a great question, Director Borthwick. Again, when we were assuming this need, we were thinking we weren't going to possibly see a budget until sometime in the early 2026. All right. So that's when we began the process of soliciting proposals and I believe we received four total. But anyway, the when we originally wrote this motion, we weren't aware that the state had passed the budget and that hopefully funds will begin to flow pretty, pretty soon. Okay? That being said, even if dollars are released ASAP, there may be deductions that come out of our subsidy for things that the state has paid on our behalf while this budget impasse has gone through, such as our debt service payments on principal and interest, as well as some other deductions like for our cyber charter schools. So I don't know what the impact of that is going to be yet. I'm hoping maybe Attorney Fitzgerald maybe can help me here, but is there a way that we can amend this motion that allows the administration and solicitor to enact the TRAN if we deem it necessary in the next few weeks? Based off of, you know, the timeline in which state budget dollars begin to flow? The one thing I don't want to do, there is an origination fee that the bank would charge us as well as some legal fees. I don't want to incur those fees and then not need the borrowing. But I want to be able to, depending on how quickly the state subsidy begins to flow, I want to be able to authorize this if necessary. Because that makes.
Yeah, I agree with you, Pat, 100% because we don't know how the comptroller is going to issue this or when they're going to issue this. And because January 2nd is a payroll, we want to make sure that if needed, we have everything in place.
Yes, so you can authorize this motion to direct us to do that as needed, if needed. So as we go forward on this, if it, you know, becomes apparent that we are not going to need it, we can save the, you know, the origination fees and legal fees. But, you know, we just have to be cautious of any, you know, timeframes as far as the, you know, receiving the funding is concerned, you know, from the. Or no?
Oh, sorry, Ty, I talked over you. I apologize.
Do we need to amend the motion? If so, what is the exact verbiage that needs to be said so we can go ahead and vote on that right now?
I'll make the motion.
He's going to tell us here, Bob. He's going to, the solicitor. What's the exact verbiage you're saying and it needs to say?
So it's a motion to approve the tax revenue anticipation note contingent on it remaining necessary after dispersment by the comptroller.
You have that?
Yep, jotting it down now. Okay, so I make a motion to amend the motion to state that the TRAN will be contingent on it remaining necessary dependent upon the dispersment from the comptroller.
Second.
On the question.
So I have a question. So I just want to know how we chose Fidelity Bank. I I know that they have the lowest interest rate, but they do have the highest origination fee compared to some of the other options. And the interest rate, they differ slightly, but they differ by a whole lot. So I was just wondering how we chose fidelity.
It's a great question, Director. Just okay. Again, we tried to do a cost out of a couple of different scenarios. Would we need to draw down on these funds and pay back within three months or pay back within four months? Ultimately, in both scenarios, even with the fees not to exceed, they appear to be the lower total estimated costs.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Casey? Mr. Casey?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Ms. Cheswick?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Ms. Merkel?
Yes.
Mr. Zlecki?
Yes.
Mr. Triano?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Now, time to have to reread it again so we can vote. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve a tax revenue anticipation note, a TRAN in an amount not to exceed 32,800,000 with Fidelity Bank with an interest rate of 3.5%. The approval is based on the proposal submitted by Fidelity Bank and deposit for the Scranton School District 2026 TRAN. The TRAN will be managed on an as-needed drawdown basis. A summary of all proposals was previously provided to the Board of Education. The Board authorized the district administration and solicitor to prepare and finalize all necessary paperwork related to the 2026 TRAN. This TRAN is contingent on it remaining necessary upon dispersment by the comptroller. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Ms. Merkel?
Yes.
Mr. Strzleki?
Yes.
Mr. Triano?
Yes.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Pat, since there's not a 10-9 motion, could you please explain that and make the motion to approve the flex spending account, please, so that we could go ahead and vote on that?
Oh, there's not a motion for that?
No. We didn't get a motion.
So, okay, I apologize. My so I guess, you know, the board brought forward the motion to the, to the committee. I think the motion could be as simple as the board authorizes district administration and solicitor to engage a firm to originate a flexible spending account for the district, for the Scranton School District. The question would be which firm would the board so choose? Again, we briefly reviewed the brief summary. Again, it is not comprehensive. But again, we have a local-based Scranton firm and a nationwide, more Pennsylvania firm with dedicated account manager to the area. One does charge a fee structure, the other one would be at no cost. But with the ability for them to solicit employees for voluntary insurance benefits, both have experienced servicing districts within our area. You know, the Hay-McAndrew Scranton base has all forged, done more North Bokan, Lakeland, Riverside and CTC. As noted, American Fidelity is IU18, IU19, Forest City, Lackland Trail and some other districts throughout the area. Saratoga, Jersey Shore, Northern and Southern Tioga. They both offer very similar services in terms of debit card transactions for eligible expenses, online portals, apps for your phone. So that is a summary. I think it can read as simple as the board authorizes the district and the solicitor to engage blank firm to originate a flexible spending account for the Scranton School District.
Pat? Pat?
Yes.
I'd be in favor of going with the local firm, which I believe is McAndrew. And if nobody has any objection, could we put the name of the McAndrew firm in the resolution and pass it tonight? Because I know that this board's philosophy has turned more to supporting our local people who live and pay taxes in the city of Scranton.
So, Senator, I have a question. How does that work? What is your recommendation?
My recommendation would be that we take the language of the motion that Mr. Laffey had laid out and include McAndrew. I believe that, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, both of them have submitted for, you know, what their plans are. If there's no objection, we can vote to have them placed in as the as essentially the administrator of the flex spending account.
Yeah, the committee already made a recommendation, so it's.
Do we have, I understand that, but also do we have a cost amount? Dollar, every time we vote and there's a cost amount, we read that off as well? Is there dollar amount attached to this?
So we are estimating that at $17,100 based off of 1,250 eligible employees.
$17,100?
100.
Budget and Finance, did you have that completely where you could just read that back so we can go ahead and make that motion?
Is it Budget and Finance or is it vendor relations?
Vendor relations. It's a case.
I have, I have something right here. Motion to approve the Hay-McAndrew as the administrator to the district's flexible spending account. I so moved.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
I'll be abstaining just due to lack of time to review the recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Ms. Merkel?
Yes.
Mr. Zlecki?
Yes.
Mr. Triano? Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Eight affirmative, one abstention. Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn meeting?
So, Paul, Ty, I do have one thing. When I was congratulating you on your service, I forgot to recognize the victory of Mr. McAndrew to who's going to be leaving this board and going into bigger and better things down at helping the city of Scranton as a what do you call yourself, a councilman-elect. I wish you well.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your service on behalf of the Scranton School District.
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate it.
Thank you and congrats.
Thanks.